Paul Landville.
Here.
Jay Artunelston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Ugrin.
Here.
Travis Forbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Larry Tellam.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, counsel, as always, remember a conflict of interest if you have anything that you shouldn't be going on or where I'm staying from, please let the rest of the council know. Can I get a motion to approve an amended agenda? Under current claims, item C should be 2024 payable claims. And then we're going to remove, ask you to remove new business item H. That is to approve and authorize Police Chief Rosner to sign a trading consultant contract with Gideon Group under advisement from our attorneys. We want to make some changes to the language of that agreement. We met today to talk about that, the chief was there also. Everybody's in agreement with what we would like to change that language to. So we'll get that sent off to the grant books that gave us the money for that and we'll get it off the Gideon Group also. Once we have the changes back, which we expect to have by the next council meeting, we'll put that in front of you then. Austin, is there anything you want to add to that? All right, thank you. So those are the two changes. Under current claims, item C 2024 for the 2023, and to remove new business item H.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda to change claims, item C to 2024, and amend to remove new business item H.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the December 16th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 16th council meeting.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $138,588.67.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve current claims for $222,130.98.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the 2024 payable claims?
I make a motion to approve the 2024 payable claims of $88,537.16.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims, $9,346.36.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our communications from the public. Is there anyone that wants to address the council under communications from the public for anything other than the cannabis ordinances that are in front of us? Once we get into the public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to tell the council what you feel about those two ordinances, but we won't do that at this point. This would be for any communications from the public other than the cannabis ordinances.
There are been hearings with the building ordinance change. Especially kind of general comparisons for that one.
Anyway. All right. Our first public hearing is at 7:10. So our council update is at Kaylee Snyder with Black Hills Council of Local Governments. It's going to give us an update on the Fall River natural hazard mitigation plan update. Yep, if you come up to the microphone, please. Give us your name and who you're with. And if you're still chatting and if council has questions for you at our 7:10, we'll just take a pause. Not encourage you quick, just giving you a heads up.
My name is Kaylee Snyder. I am with the Black Hills Council of Local Governments. For those of you who may not be familiar with who we are and what we do, we are one of six planned districts in South Dakota that serve by counties on the western side of South Dakota. Hot Springs is one of our members. So the reason that I'm here this evening is to just let you guys be aware that we are working on the update of the Fall River natural hazard mitigation plan. We don't know if any of you are familiar with that or if you're there or learning the last update, but this is a plan that's updated every five years. It is a theme on approved plans, so that's part of the requirement is that update. So the reason I'm here in Hot Springs is while it's called the Fall River County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the cities participate. By participating, you're allowed to be on the plan as well, and therefore you're able to apply on your own for different hazard mitigation funding that might be available. And more importantly, you have an actual plan that reflects the city as well as. So a hazard mitigation plan, I guess, unless you go back in if you're not familiar with it, it is a plan that primarily looks at natural hazards, so things like flooding, wildfires, tornadoes, those types of things. And it looks at not like response and recovery, but what we can do for those hazards happen. A lot of times you'll see there'll be different ordinances that the city has, county has. An example is some communities, like the Grand Rapids, that will have water restrictions, different things like that. zoning sometimes will come into play, one of the aspects of that. But so we're beginning to face with this, so I'll be working with the manager of Lawrence County, working on together the planning team, representing each of the local members. We'll eventually have a community meeting. There's plenty of opportunity for the public to comment and share any comments in that regard. And the plan is set to expire in August, so we'll be moving through things quickly. And that's it. So once it's all been done, we'll do the draft review to look at. If I'm correct, we'll send it over to Eva, put them to review group, and then we'll be back and we can go. So, any questions?
Did you say that you are currently working with the Fall River County Emergency Management?
That's correct. Yes, correct. So it's going to be my primary contact is the bridge. All right. Oh, there is a sign in sheet that's going around. You guys can say that helps us show participation for Hot Springs and also helps us pay for the grant, so it's essentially a site cover at the end. And if you're trying to get here is part of the interaction. So if anybody in the public can also sign that, we'll stick around for a little bit if anybody wants to sign something, you know, we're excited to sign. That's it, that's all I have. I don't know if it's 7:10, but okay.
No, we're getting close. Anywhere else, council? Anywhere else? All right. Well, I do have a question, but we're close enough that I'll ask you my question after the public hearing. We're at 7:10, Darb. Which is, is fine, just grab one of the more comfortable seats up front. And we'll... All right. So we're at 7:10. Like to open a public hearing. It's a hearing on the proposed amendment titled 15 Land Usage, Chapter 155 Zoning Code, 155.023, General Commercial District, G.C., 155.025, Highway Service District, H.S., and 155.058 Cannabis Establishments. So is there anyone in the public that would like to address the proposed changes? Any of you? Come on down.
Is this thing talking to them?
Handhold it or raise it up.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Kim Allen. I live at Orr, so in the county. I am here to address the ordinance changes that y'all are proposing for the city of Hot Springs and to ask that you do not approve the ordinance changes for a cannabis cultivation or grow houses, most people know of it, a maybe factory facility. I have a few handouts. I didn't, I knew there was none, council people, so I missed, I missed these guys. I do understand this is a first reading, so I hope y'all will consider the notes. There are also sources, links and sources to the bottom that you can follow up with before, if there reaches a second reading, which I hope they will reply. There's a lot of aspects that I don't have probably a lot of time to go into tonight about allowing a grow house and manufacturing or manufacturing facility, not only in the county, but here in the city of Hot Springs, that's our small town. I'll just be honest, a couple of years ago, I was actually a proponent for grow houses. I prefer a more natural course for people to be able to take for medicinal purposes. And I thought, hey, this would probably be a pretty good thing we have to go into the county. However, I'm the one that if I'm going to have a strong opinion, I'd like to have an educated opinion about it. And I didn't even know what you spoke, okay? So I was that green. So I started researching grow houses as it was being proposed within the county. And my eyes got opened. And I believe if people would take the time and do the research, they would find that these are not good facilities, especially coming into small towns. There are some facilities that you will find, you can find on social media, on YouTube, that are fully enclosed, they look like hospitals. And initially, I thought that's probably what we were looking at here in South Dakota. And the more I found out and the more research I did, and strangely enough, the majority of the research comes from the marijuana industry themselves, from other states like Colorado and Washington and California. And it points to a lot of regulation and a lot of problems. Just, just a few of the things that you'll see in this listing that often gets overlooked and not addressed, especially by smaller communities, because let's face it, we don't have the resources and the people to handle this. But, and then you start looking at the state laws that our legislators passed here and it gets, it gets even deeper and not in a good way. But there's a financial impact that happens within these communities. There's an environmental impact that is attributed to the pesticides and herbicides that are, have to be applied with these indoor growth facilities to keep these, the plant from pest and fungus and stuff. The water usage and energy usage, and all this is listed in there without me going into it, but a lot of the, the grow houses, a recent study came out of Colorado, there's a 36% increase in the power drain per grow house. That's huge, y'all. That, and that affects us and our, and our resources. Air quality impacts. You can find, it's not hard to find, and if you have ever been around it, you can go up to Duke County, you can go across the state where there's other grow facilities or grow houses that have been allowed to come in. And it stinks like a skunk. Now, our, our town is in a bowl. We all know that we're kind of in a bowl, we're trapped on all sides. And so that does a lot with the weather and the smell and, and the, the way that everything is affected. So you're talking about bringing one into the city, right into the middle of our geological bowl, and it's going to sit here. And I don't care what they say about, whoa, we've got filters. They all have filters and they're all supposed to regulate the filters. And everybody will tell you that lives by one or has to do business in one or drive by one, they stink like dead skunks. We don't want that in our town. We don't want that here. There's habitat impacts that can happen, maybe not so much in town, sometimes these when we're out in the county, but to wildlife. There's things like they have, they've had issues with the, the, um, the waste from the plants and from the buds that get dumped, and then the wildlife eat it. And everybody says, oh, we, we won't do that. Of course, nobody ever gets to it, but it gets dumped, then you have your wildlife come along, now you've got poisoned wildlife. I mean, this, these are, it seems trivial, but this is stuff that is documented and has gone on for years in states and other states that have allowed the grow houses to come in. We have a, a bit concerned right now with the citizens over real estate taxes. And everybody's talking about it and the increase in our taxes and the county just increased the mill levies and, and everything. Well, the good news is with the grow house coming into town, the research shows that the house values go down. So I guess that would fix our, our real estate tax problem, right? Because it's going to drive the value of our homes down. I don't think that's how we want that fixed. And these are all things that really, really need to be considered. And look at the quality of our life. Look at the law enforcement. You can talk with our county, state attorney and look at the number and our police officers, at the number of drug-related arrests that we've had increase in the past couple of years. Well, talk to the, talk to the ones who do this and they'll tell you, within the first five years of grow houses being opened up, the majority of them across the nation get bought out by the cartel. Let that sink in. That's opening the door to the cartel moving in. I know that probably a lot of y'all have been contacted by them. I would say, and I say this because when the owner of the dispensary was trying to get a grow house put in at Buffalo Gap last year, he, he admitted, yeah, I've been, I've been contacted by the cartel, sure. So it's not boring. This isn't a TV movie, it's not something made up. This is something that's happening in our small town and our small community. I know that we're hurting for money. And this, but this, the fees, this is not the way to increase it. Let's get a business in here, let's put our energy and effort and investment in, in businesses that will be around long-term. I realize the ordinances change are also part of, they want longer hours because there's been concern, we have to compete with the pricing of Rapid City and other dispensaries. Welcome to small business in a small town. Talk to Sunnys and Linds and the clothing stores and the restaurants that are doing business here. But let's put our investment, maybe more into those kind of businesses that are going to be around. There was a recent article just this month that was published, I did not get that on your, on the write-up, but they talked about how there's a lot of dispensaries across the state that are shutting their doors since recreational marijuana failed. Thank goodness. So, and I know that's a concern for the local dispensary here, that's what they have stated, is the cost in increase and, and hey, we want a grow house closer so we don't have to transport. These were all things that were, that they also discussed when they approached Buffalo Gap, council and the residents of Buffalo Gap last year. But it's not a winning business. The, a number of cardholders in the state has decreased over three percent since the beginning of the year, over 15% since medical marijuana was brought forth. You can find all this out online on the state pages. It's not a winning investment. It's not something that we want in our community for all sorts of reasons. So whichever aspect you want to look at, there's, there's a roadblock. So I just ask respectfully that y'all will not approve this ordinance change for several of these reasons. Do some more looking into it, do some more research. We've got dispensary, people who need, who have the cards and want medical marijuana, it's available to them. Don't, please don't pollute our beautiful city. And that's it, I can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a prepared statement. I'm a little bit nervous to speak in public.
Ma'am, what's up? Name?
I'm sorry, what?
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. My name is, my name is Celeste Nice, and I live at 641 Happy Hollow Street. And I just want to start off by saying that I moved here, I first lived in Los Angeles. This all went into effect, so I left. I moved to a small suburb in Oregon. That suburb was also taken over by dispensaries. I moved my family, we all moved to this beautiful town to get away from the crime, the corruption, everything that came along with the drug trade. So recently, I read a letter to the editor praising Hot Springs for having, quote, "everything for a perfect vacation." Millions of dollars has been spent repairing the infrastructure and enhancing the beauty of our town. Additionally, the Smithsonian magazine named Hot Springs as one of the top 15 towns to visit in the United States. These accomplishments make it clear that we live in a community that is worth preserving and protecting. If the council permits more dispensaries and a grow facility, the consequences will be severe. The quality of life for everyone in Hot Springs and even the Black Hills region will deteriorate. All the investments made to improve and beautify our area will be absolutely wasted. I have personally witnessed the destruction that accompanies the introduction of the drug industry into communities, once peaceful neighborhoods become plagued with crime, trash, and a general decline in standards. Parks that were once family-friendly begin to reap from dispensary and grow facility product discouraging community use and enjoyment. The distinction between medical and recreational facilities is minimal at best. In communities on the west coast where I have lived, medical marijuana facilities serve stepping stones to widespread recreational use and the presence of other drugs. Obtaining a medical card is very easy, often only requiring a vague excuse which blurs the lines between medical and recreational use. This has led to an explosion in the availability and use of marijuana. What's more troubling is the influx of people drawn to work in the marijuana drug industry. Many of these individuals have no respect for local residents, bringing with them increased crime and societal strain. Cartels also become more active in these areas because this industry is one of their strongholds. In May 2022, a Guatemalan man, a man from El Salvador, and a woman came to this region from Greeley, Colorado, and allegedly attempted to kidnap an FBI agent with intentions as sinister as burning him alive. Our proximity to Colorado is a concern. If facilities expand in Hot Springs, we will not only face an increase in marijuana-related issues, but also an eventual influx of other drugs and the associated criminal activities. The industry is often tied to human trafficking. A tragic example of this occurred in rural Riverside County, California, where seven workers at a grow site were murdered while they slept, some of whom were discovered to be trafficking victims. Another issue is our lack of sufficient law enforcement to handle the inevitable increases in crime that comes with expanding this drug industry. Is our community prepared to live in a police-style state and pay for the high cost of hiring more law enforcement to handle the influx of crime? Based on my own experiences, I can say with certainty that introducing more facilities is one of the fastest ways to destroy a beautiful community. It normalizes drug use, violence, and crime, creating a devastating cycle that robs our children of hope and a bright future. When I drive past the current dispensary in Hot Springs, I've never seen long lines or a full parking lot. This makes me wonder why the council is even considering such changes. Unless the goal is to flood our community with marijuana and make it ubiquitous, why do we need more stores or grow facility? Lastly, the people of our state did vote against recreational use. This clearly reflects that our constituents do not want or need more marijuana facilities. It is an industry that brings tragedy, pain, and suffering to communities. It has no place here in Hot Springs. Please, for the sake of the people, focus on supporting local businesses that uplift our community and preserve its unique character. Allowing more marijuana facilities here will undoubtedly diminish the quality of life in Hot Springs and the Black Hills region. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Celeste, can you please spell your last name for me?
N-I-E-C-E.
N-I-E-C-E. Correct. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Beth Switzer, and my address is 27528 Renee Court in Hot Springs. And I hope you will also allow me to talk about, I see it's later on in the agenda, the ordinance is 1262 and 1263, which are also tied to the marijuana. And I'm here to speak against those and the establishment of manufacturing and cultivation of marijuana in Hot Springs. And disappointed that the planning and zoning committee approved the changes, and quite frankly, I'm angry that the public safety committee approved the changes. Marijuana is anything but safe, and I will come back to that in a moment. But first, I want to state my opposition to the changes made in ordinance 1263, Chapter 116, Section 116.04 to Section 116.08 in regards to the license fee. The fee of $5,000 was struck and replaced with the words "in an amount set by council and subject to change." That means the council could set the license fee at a dollar. The fee should be high. My suggestion is that the wording "not less than" be added so that the sentence reads "application fee of not less than $5,000 be set by council and subject to change for each type of cannabis establishment." I request that none of the changes that have been suggested be adopted except for the one that I just mentioned regarding the application fee. Now, I want to return to my argument that marijuana is not good for public safety, for public safety. What the public doesn't seem to know is that there are several cannabis-based drugs that have been properly approved through the Food and Drug Administration process. We do not need medical marijuana dispensaries. We do not need medical marijuana dispensaries. Marijuana is not medicine. There is no evidence marijuana is effective for treating pain, insomnia, anxiety, depression, PTSD, or cancer. In fact, marijuana users typically require more pain medication after a major surgery than non-users. There are important reasons marijuana did not need defined as a medicine any more than herb it could be. To approve a medicine, the FDA requires five criteria to be fulfilled. The drug's chemistry must be known and reproducible. Two, there must be adequate safety studies. Dispensary marijuana cannot be studied or used safely under medical supervision because the substance is not standardized. Number three, there must be adequate and well-controlled studies proving efficacy. Twelve clinical trials scrutinizing marijuana concluded that there is no or insufficient evidence for the use of marijuana for specific medical conditions. Four, the drug must be accepted by well-qualified experts. Medical associations do not endorse marijuana as a medicine. The American Medical Association says cannabis is a dangerous drug and as such is a public health concern. The American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry says medicalization of smoked marijuana has distorted the perception of the known risks of this drug. And the American Psychiatric Association says there is no current scientific evidence that marijuana is in any way beneficial for treatment of any psychiatric disorder. And lastly, number five, scientific evidence must be widely available. The evidence for approval of medical conditions in state ballot and legislative initiatives did not conform to rigorous, objective clinical trials, nor was it widely available for scrutiny. Marijuana fails to meet any of these five criteria for accepted medical use in the United States. Marijuana is illegal at a federal level because it is dangerous. It is particularly dangerous to the developing brain, anyone under 25 years of age. Marijuana can lead to a motivational syndrome, which is characterized by detachment as well as blunt and emotion, derives and executive functions like memory and attention, anxiety, autism, cancer. Heart health, heart attacks are twice as likely in young adults who use cannabis. Liver damage, depression, marijuana addiction, about one of 10 users will become addicted. Motor vehicle collisions, the risk of car collisions increases too full after smoking cannabis. Birth defects, a child's development is impaired by a mother's marijuana use during pregnancy. Neurocognitive effects, cannabis use impairs cognitive functions such as coordination, ability to plan, organize, solve problems, make decisions, remember, control emotion and behavior. Psychosis and schizophrenia, daily marijuana use has a five-time increase in developing a psychotic disorder. Suicide, violence, and death. According to data collected by the states of Arizona, Texas, and Florida, which are not considered high pop-use states, marijuana is the number one drug associated with children's deaths. These children are not dying as a result of marijuana use or poisoning, although that is happening at an increasingly rate. But children are dying as a result of abuse or neglect by their parents or guardians who are using marijuana. Unfortunately, such data isn't collected in California, Washington, Oregon, or Colorado, which are very high-use states. Like was just mentioned, besides the hazards of allowing marijuana in our community, I also want to remind the council that South Dakotans resoundingly defeated Initiative Measure 29, which was to legalize the recreational use, possession, and distribution of marijuana. You may say that this does not pertain to this agenda item, which has to do with medicinal use of marijuana, but I disagree. South Dakotans have begun to see the lies that the marijuana industry continues to spout, and South Dakotans have made their voices heard through their votes. They don't want marijuana in the state. In the state of South Dakota, that measure was defeated 56% to 44%, and in Fall River County, Initiative Measure 29 was defeated 59% to 40%, an even bigger margin. I'm asking you to please not go against the people's voices and instead do what is right and protect the citizens of Hot Springs by rejecting the changes that have been requested by the marijuana dispensary business. Thanks for listening.
Frank Kirkhold, 905 South 6. I'm here to speak against the changes to the ordinances, which will offer the establishment of manufacturing and cultivation marijuana in Hot Springs. First, I oppose marijuana consumption as a detriment to society and our town more specifically. Second, medical marijuana is a Trojan horse for recreational. Since the election, there have been 10 shops that have closed in South Dakota. The number of shops is defined from 78 to 68, according to ventanus.spe.gov. I'm quoting a South Dakota Searchlight article dated December 27, 2024, which interviewed a shop owner in eastern South Dakota who was closing. He said in the article, "Had Initiative Measure 29 passed on election day and legalized the possession of recreational marijuana," the owner said, "I'd still be in the business." But I didn't. "I was ready to go for the ride," said the owner. In addition, there is apparently alternatives available at smoke shops. From that same article, this person was quoted as saying, "Those shops capitalize on legal loophole in the 2018 Farm Bill to sell products derived from hemp by synthesizing intoxicants found in small amounts in hemp and adding enough to create a high-decent product." All of these smoke shops that are open all throughout the state of South Dakota, the one that I own included, they're selling legal weed. I can buy product from anywhere in the state and have it shipped to me and sell it. Third, this is from me. Currently, Dakota Kind LLC is delinquent and filing their annual tax report, their annual report with the South Dakota Secretary of State, here more than 60 days behind beyond their window to file an annual report, making them officially delinquent. Lastly, just because a business is legal, is legally allowed, doesn't mean that the council is obligated to support and or its expansion. Recent council actions testify to this, specifically the denial of an off-sale beer license to the Dollar Store on the north end of town and the denial of the application to construct billboards on the truck bypass. I encourage the council not to change the ordinances as proposed. Thank you.
Sandra Waller, 14071 East Hell Road, Fall. So I'm a newly-elected county commissioner for Fall River County here. And I just am not, they've done a wonderful job telling you all the facts. I have a business in town, so I commit to town almost every day for that. And I know that the people that voted for me, the majority of them, do not want anything to do with marijuana that's going to expand it in our community. So I'll leave it at that, but see you.
Larry, can you see if you could maybe hold the microphone? It's a little tough to hear you. Audience, can you?
It takes a moment once you turn it on for it to turn on.
Carl. Carl's coming out to take a look at me. Carl's coming out to take a look.
And we would really like to hear what you have to say.
Test one, two. There we go.
Right today from experience, what you're facing, you're going to be a larger police presence, and you're in jail than you're just being right now. Crime is going to go up in a lot of areas. Card sales are going to go up. You're going to have a lot of homeless people, suicides, explode basically, impaired driving, impaired driving fatalities will increase. More suicides, suicide, all it's called is, again, speaking from experience, more domestic violence, child abuse, child neglect, thefts and burglaries, home break-ins. And marijuana is just a stepping stone. I've heard what people say, it's a stepping stone towards a drug. In terms of experience, I've talked to a lot of these people, a lot of them are arrested or were on harder drugs, and I said, yeah, I started on marijuana. I presume it didn't fill my picture, so I had to move up. That's all I had, hope you don't make it any bad, get rid of bad debt.
Could we get your full name and address, sir?
I got Larry Mason from Isma. Do you want to add the address of town? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can you repeat your name again, please?
Ebert Sutton. S-U-T-T-O-M. S-U-T-T-O-M. And I'm regular, hi, I'm here, and you?
Thank you. I just wanted to open your eyes to a little bit of what I've seen in Washington State where I came from. So I am a real estate agent there, property manager, managed hundreds of homes. And when the marijuana came in there, I actually rented homes to the employees of the processing plants. One, one I'll never forget, she was the accountant for a large grow facility. She told me, she said that every employee was so high, it was so hard to get numbers out of them. She said, I had to do a end-of-the-year accounting, every employee was stalled. Just one there on the facility. They're all highs and lows. And this really happened, this is a real story. These employees get churned through this system, okay? So you get these employees working at these grow facilities, they do something goofy, they get fired, they're hiring more people all the time. We all think that's great. The ones that get fired go back into our community, and that's where we got the homeless up the street. And pissing and pooping and just lying in front of businesses because they had nowhere to go. Now, God bless Fall River County, because in my little neck of the woods, I have a wonderful Amish community growing. They bought one house, and there was one family of five. Within a couple weeks, there were two families, ten. And now there's four families of 20 on one property. So when they fill the streets of Hot Springs and they overflow, they're going to go into the counties where you can have multiple people sleeping anywhere because there's, and I love that we have this opportunity and people can, you know, have multiple families on a property, but I don't want a big drug community. I don't want it in oral, I don't want it in Edmond, I don't want it in Hot Springs. But it will come, they'll churn through these employees, and I've seen it. And then they wipe marijuana streets. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jessica Catarat from Isma. I have a brother in Ohio. I'm with the Dakota Kind dispensary in town, so I'd like to go over some of the points that have been made so far. First off, it will be a fully enclosed facility. It's indoor, will not affect any water smell, and we're right outside of the sewage plant if there is any smell. I think it would probably be preferable to the smell that's currently outside of our facility. But again, there are the filters, lots of air cleaning products that do make most of the smell out, if not all of it. If you are very sensitive to the smell, it's possible sometimes to smell it. I was actually allergic to cannabis for a long time and would break out hives if I was even near the smell. And I've been outside of a lot of the facilities in the state, you can't smell anything. And you won't be able to smell anything from our facility. You can't smell anything from the dispensary, you wouldn't be able to smell anything from the grow either. Pesticides, if it's indoor, any pesticides that are used, which is very minimal, mostly you can control pests with different bugs. With ladybugs and mantesis will control most of the pests that are in cannabis. So you don't have to have a lot of pesticide. There's nothing to be getting out of the facility anyways. We use very minimal water, maybe, what was it, a gallon of water a day?
A gallon of water a day, and then a thirty and forty gallons.
So minimal water. We have been in town for two years, and I hear that your property values have gone up, so we do not harm anyone's property values. A lot of people don't even notice that we're in town. I talk to people in town, and they're like, oh, there's this dispensary, where is it at? They drive by it every single day. No one knows we're there. We have...
You've got to sign up.
Hot Springs is a veterans' town. The VA doctors actually do prescribe cannabis to patients. We have a lot of patients that are veterans, and we've helped them with a lot of different issues. We've gotten people off of meth by using cannabis. And if you're trying to say that there's no medical use for marijuana, I myself would not be alive if it was not for cannabis. I was very against it for a long time. I was in college, I had student loans, I had grants, and if I had covered anything like that, I would have been, I would have lost my scholarships. I would not even let my boyfriend's friends in my car if they had marijuana with them. But I got to a point of weeks away from death because I was unable to stand, I was unable to eat, I couldn't even drink water. The only thing that saved me was because we lived in Massachusetts at the time, although I am from Rapid. My boyfriend at the time, who's now my husband, went to New Hampshire, got some medicated peanut butter and brought it back, and all I was able to do was to just suck on the spoon with the peanut butter on it, and that was able to get me able to drink some water. So when I went to the hospital, which I had finally had the energy to go to the hospital, they had to poke me 48 times to get blood because I was so dehydrated. I had not eaten solid food or even liquid in over three months. Medical cannabis is the only reason I was able to keep... Medical cannabis is the only reason I was able to eat the peanut butter. I was able to eat Jell-O. And I was able to call my mom and tell her that I was doing so poorly and she helped me get a new doctor's announcement. I would not be alive if it was not for cannabis. And we have so many patients with similar stories. We have patients that... I mean, I can't go into anyone's medical details, but we have patients that need this medicine. And it is, in fact, a medicine. People know what it does. It helps. If you can't get over your PTSD, if you have pain, if you have neurological conditions, it does help. We have people every day whose cards have expired, their medical cards, and they can't afford to get a new one. They'll come in and cry. I can't stand this anymore, but I can't get any medicine, I can't afford to renew my card. And they do not want to have to take opioids, painkillers, where, which is where they're going to go if they can't get the medical cannabis that they need. Opening the grow and the manufacturing in town will not change anything from what it is now, except for lower the prices for those medical patients who desperately need this medication. If you do not like this medication, don't take it. But it is necessary for a lot of the people that we serve. And... I don't know of any of our employees, past or present, who have ever gone to that room this week. We have several employees that are good outstanding community citizens. We haven't had any issues. The crime rate of marijuana has actually gone down since medical was passed. We discussed this the last meeting. The overall drug arrests have gone up. But cannabis arrests have gone significantly down. The... And it has not been any increase in crime from us being open in town. There was a fear that there would be an increase in crime. But as we spoke with the, was it the Public Safety Commission? The Chief of Police Ross said there had been no increase and they have not been called to our facility or because of our facility at any time for any reason. I'd like to see sources for a lot of the claims that were made. There are all of the claims that I heard. There may be some cases of someone using cannabis and doing unspeakable things. That's not because the cannabis made them do it, they would have done it anyways. All of those atrocities are committed in much greater numbers with people drinking alcohol. Marijuana makes you want to chill, feel better, maybe eat a little bit. It's alcohol that makes people go out and drive into crazy things. I don't know anyone that does crazy things or has smoked. Usually they want to clean their house or go to the gym or sit down on the couch and just watch TV and finally eat something when they haven't been able to, well, because they're vomiting due to their cancer treatments. And then they're able to sit down, relax, feel a little bit less pain, and actually eat something when you can't eat something. Most of the time. There's also different terpenes in the cannabis that cause different effects. Which is why a lot of the medications that they're trying to make out of cannabis are not as effective because they don't have all of the terpenes. If you take just THC, that's not going to help you. It's not just THC. It's the THC, the CBD, CPDB, CBDA. All of these different chemicals working together, which we call the entourage effect, helps the pain and the nausea and... So depending on the strain that you have is what's going to determine how it affects you. And so with us being able to grow our own cannabis, we can tailor it to our patients. If we need someone that has, say, they need to eat next, you can grow a plant that has high THCP, or CPDB. One of the two, I can't remember, but it's a B. That will actually decrease your appetite. So it's actually a weight loss assistance. Or you can use something with just the THC and that will help with being able to eat and gain weight if that's what you need. Depending on what our patients need is what we would be growing and producing. We have topicals. If I have, I have a shoulder issue from a car accident. If I am in a lot of pain, I can take one of those topicals and just rub it on my shoulder. And it's like one of the little ball jars. You rub that on your shoulder, I rub it on my shoulder. And after I'm done rubbing it, my pain is gone and I'm able to use my arm again. There's points where my arm will get, will hurt so bad, it goes up my neck and I'll go blind in my right eye. I can put that topical on my shoulder and my neck and I can see again. There are multiple multiple uses for cannabis for different people, depending on what they need. And us being able to grow and to provide that medication to our patients at a better cost and at a more specific dose of what they need is invaluable. We want to keep our patients in town, not driving to Rapid. If they're going to get, if they want the medication, they're just going to go to Rapid and get it. But with winter coming up or here already, do we want people driving all the way to Rapid, taking their business to Rapid instead of staying in town? Have you guys addressed most of the questions?
Yeah. Well, that's a good time then, Jessica. You've been at this for ten minutes and that's about the time that the rest of the speakers have. I don't want to give you an unfair advantage to the rest of them. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Forrest Manning. I'm the owner of Dakota Kind. And I just want to reiterate a little of what Jesse said. We have so many people that come in to get off opiates, to get off of alcohol, and to get away from methamphetamines. And we've been very, very successful in helping those people get off of those unwanted drugs. And the things that you hear about that our power is going to go up and that water is going to, we're going to use all the water and the sky is going to fall, oh, that's just old propaganda. We've been here for two years, there's no crime. We're members of the community and we intend to stay and grow with the community. We have more than six hundred and fifty patients that come to us every month. We're not a huge facility, but we are growing. And the average age of our customers is over fifty years old. It's not like we're giving drugs to children. We're helping people that need help with pain, that need help with cancer, that need help with several issues. I could go on all day about the people that, the different ailments that we treat people for, so... Thank you for bringing this forward. And if you have any questions, I'd like...
Anyone else?
My name is Kevin Essner. That's F-E-S-S-L-I-N-G-R. I live in Hot Springs, California. I am a customer of Forrest. I'm also an retired VA employee. I served for seven years in the Department of Service. Sixteen years old. Standing here today because of cannabis and variety of products. There are the topicals, the gums.
Could you hold on a moment, please?
Sorry, sir.
Thank you.
What I said was that I am use multiple products. I've spoken, spoken publicly. It's some damage that I was capable to. I am just marijuana in the company. The project that Forrest wants to expand will provide me with the capability of getting a product strictly here. And going to my specifications. My three plants. That's just speaking from a different place where I can't grow around that. I suffer from a disorder called osmotic myelomyalism. Essentially what has happened is sheaths on my myelomyalism. We're short circuited because of an illness and Rapid being impacted. A lot of what we heard tonight was concerning large-scale grow operations. No problems. I'm a hard culturalist that create landscape design and import. At top of Forrest at length. At the limited-scale operation, Forrest intends to to serve local customers. It's not designed to market completely out of state or out of country or out of county. It's more for arts and needs and services. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Down there we had, if there's no one else from the audience, we had one member of the public said a comment they were unable to attend. So I guess I would respect. Misty, do you have that or do you agree with it?
I do have it, but if you would like...
For your instructions, you sent to the finance office.
This is from Melissa Niles, 341 South Fourteenth Street in Hot Springs. I'm unable to attend the city council meeting January sixth due to being out of town. But I would like to express my extreme non-support to changing city ordinances. 116 dealing with cannabis businesses. Production of drugs in Hot Springs, whether deemed medical or not, is the last thing we need in our community. I have seen so much abuse of the medical cannabis law through pop-up card clinics writing prescriptions for $200 a year to the purchase of medical marijuana for resale and so much more. I have spoken to card-carrying users complaining about the police harassing them because their drug paraphernalia is in their vehicle during the traffic stop, showing blatant disregard for the law. I believe changing the law will increase police involvement and thus expense. There will be an increased risk to the business property and possibly a theft, which means an increase in police patrols and involvement. Has the Hot Springs Police Department been consulted on this change? As for the business, the dispensary owner knew the laws when he started and knew the risks. It is not the city's responsibility to cater to all the businesses' lack of planning and demands. Hot Springs does not need to be known as the place to buy cannabis. If we, the city, were not going to allow alcohol sales at the New Dollar General for the protection of its citizens, then why would we change ordinance 116? Cannabis is still against federal law. Considering Hot Springs has a large federal employee base and the VA houses a large substance abuse program, does the city really need to support expanding cannabis production? The veterans I interact with, usually VA program grads and retirees, do their best to stay away from all drugs. They would be tempted by possessing a medical marijuana card. While it is up to their healthcare provider, I do not think a large-scale dispensary and growing facility would be a good idea. We need to protect our veterans. It is for these reasons and so many more, I cannot support the changes to city ordinance 116. I will urge Hot Springs citizens to attend the meeting and show their un-support of the change. Please feel free to email me any questions or comments. I am in a state farm to school meeting on Monday, but we'll return later.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to make a statement down there, not up here.
All right.
Hey, council, my name is Larry Pratt. I'm from Elsin Thompson Avenue. I'm a recovering alcoholic fanatic. I'm a veteran of severe PTSD. And I don't do medical marijuana to deal with my issues. I go to counseling, I see a psychotherapist. I do what it takes to get off of drugs, to stay away from them. I don't do the designer-type of drugs. Help me cope with life on a daily basis. I go to AA meetings. And I feel, I don't speak for all veterans, but I do speak for myself. And I don't think the medical marijuana in that aspect is the answer. I believe that we all have to take responsibility for our own actions in this life. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:08. That brings us back to communications from the public. Dar, is that where you were? And with our communications from the public, we asked the speaker to take five minutes. And then after that, council is free to ask any follow-up questions. So we're not going to limit you to five minutes, just your comments to him, please.
Is this part of the hazard mitigation plan?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just trying to get up here working, we got back to our seat. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Dar Boyd. I'm the new emergency manager. Frank managed the place, my lieutenant after almost twenty-three years, Senator McCallum. And he's been a great asset for me. And some of you knew me from before, I was a fire teacher in Hot Springs. But I just wanted to say that our first meeting with Katie is Wednesday night at 6 o'clock at South Addings. And, where? It's at South Addings. And she does a presentation, so... We did rent the viewer center, we just took a trip to the South Addings. But hopefully we filled out South Addings with people that night to do the sign-up. And then we're from that group, we're going to pick a team, start working on our hazard mitigation plan. That plan, we give it every five years. And without renewal, that plan is approved by FEMA. That's where a lot of our federal dollars come from, in the four bands. Just wanted to introduce myself. A lot of you didn't know me, I was up there for a bigger basis. I saw you do the night of the fire, so I'm glad you're there. I'm always in my office over there for the most part. If you guys have any questions, I'll be there. If you guys have any questions, I'll be there.
Thank you.
The meeting that you're talking about, Wednesday night, what time is that?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So Kaylee, my follow-up question for you. You were talking about, one of the things you folks will be looking at is flood mitigation. Are you going to be looking at flood mitigation specific to Fall River or the flood channel?
So we'll look at the whole county at full, and then we will come in to like, go like, generally what I do is I'll meet with the county, I'll meet with the cities, we'll look at specifics in areas that are of concern for residents. So that makes sure.
Again, I'm focusing on the flood channel itself. Anybody that's been around Hot Springs for a number of years knows there's been some spirited discussion about the right way to manage Fall River or the flood channel with vegetation, those kinds of things. So I'm just interested to know if you folks will be looking at that? And whether you'll come up with, you know, any kind of recommendation?
Yes, so one of the things we'll do is, again, people like the public meetings, we'll get the public input on that, we'll do a survey that we released as well. That will help us gauge whether the community is active in those types of things. We'll meet with the cities. We tend to, we're not going to make an outlandish in there because we see something that the communities aren't comfortable with, so we will look at that as we get the information that I go.
Okay. It's been a personal disappointment for me that recognizing there are different opinions of what the right thing to do with the flood channel with Fall River. And two years ago, I believe it was two years ago, we had an opportunity to sit down with the Corps and some of the concerned citizens that felt that we were going the wrong direction with how we were managing Fall River, to ask the Corps, tell us, are we doing too much? Are we not doing enough? Give us some guidance and give the public some guidance. And they just didn't seem to want to go there. They didn't want to take a stance, which then makes it difficult to figure out what the right solution is. If we're being overly aggressive, we need to know that. But when you call it a flood channel, in my mind, there are certain things that preclude aesthetics. So I'd be interested in knowing what you folks discuss and be a part of that.
Yeah, yeah, once we get more information and see what's going on, we did presentations. And I try to make them, do that for work. Some communities are more in favor of maybe stricter type of regulations and others are against it. It just depends on what the community and the locals is to.
Yeah. And again, when it comes to Fall River, you know, we have an agreement with the Corps, a contract we've signed with them, that says we will meet their expectations, their requirements. So it's not so much, you know, what does a community, what would they visually look like to see versus making sure that if there is a flood, that we don't make it worse.
Right, and there are, I mean, there are certain, I mean, if you wanted to pass certain funding or be able to do certain things, you have to have some type of regulation. It's again, it's somewhat dependent on the type of community and that, in some parts.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other communications from the public?
Mayor Nelson, city councilor. I just came to give you invitations to our annual night, which is on January seventeenth. And our guest speaker will be Tim Johnson, who's the CEO and President of Elevate Rapid City, has a really interesting story. And he will be at Halifino's Grill on the bottom floor. Thank you.
What was that date?
Seventeenth.
This month, next month?
Yes.
And that's at Halifino's?
Yes, sir.
Ooh.
Thanks.
It's at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Six o'clock?
And I can't, unfortunately, we won't have any reserved seating this year just because there's just not enough room there to do it, which early, it's pretty crowded and everyone is busy.
All right.
So you might not all be able to sit together, is what I'm going to. Thank you.
Any other communications from the public? All right. That brings us to our personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions E through J? Make a motion.
Personnel actions item E through J.
Second. Discussion. I'd like to call attention to personnel action E. Question was raised about Scott Sobeat temporary appointment, part-time. As you all remember, Scott retired from the city January, or December thirty-first. And at the last council meeting, you hired his replacement. And in looking at it, this action would give Scott the opportunity to put in up to ten hours of part-time work through the month of December or January to help a new building inspector kind of get up to speed and know where everything's at in the office and just get him working more efficiently, more quickly. So that's what this particular one's about.
Mayor, can I state a mention? It's not ten hours, it's up to ten days.
Ten days, thank you. Ten days. So is there anything else like that, John, on that?
No, this would just give Scott a chance to further assist the building inspector if he needed it.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to our first ordinance. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve sixty-two?
Make motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve sixty-two and ordinance providing positive land usage, chapter one fifty-five zoning code, one fifty-five point zero two three, general commercial district TC, one fifty-five zero two five, highway services district, and one fifty-five point zero five eight cannabis establishments.
Second. Discussion.
So since the cannabis establishment is a commercial business, do we really need to change it or are we just adding?
The general commercial district is the zoning assignment for an area.
Okay. And that's where our present facility is, is it within that?
In the commercials.
So you're just adding the last portion of that to include the cannabis establishment in an already commercial, general commercial district?
Correct. Okay. It's actually changing the language that allows for dispensaries to allow for establishments.
So what you're saying is in effect, this has been slipped in there, and if we vote on all this tonight, then we vote on getting a cannabis establishment that does marijuana cultivation and manufacturing. Am I correct in saying that?
It would allow certain, that you authorized, so yeah.
It's a man in the language of the ordinance to allow cultivation or manufacturing. They then have to apply to the state for the appropriate licensing, the council have to prove that. So approving the language changes in the ordinances doesn't automatically give a particular business, Dakota Kind in this particular case, they don't automatically get a license changing of the ordinance itself.
But what I'm saying is that we vote yes on this, this starts the process of manufacturing and going down that road, right? We've got people in here that don't want this. So I think we as a council need to take a long, hard look at this before we vote on it. That's my recommendation.
We have a business with six hundred and fifty...
That's not my point, okay?
Well, it's a business establishment already in a commercial district, and I don't understand why we're adding this since it's a commercial establishment already in a commercial district.
Our current ordinance says dispensaries only. This changes the wording to establishments, and then there's other verbiage that allows cultivation and manufacturing. So let Larry's correct, this is the first step to allow those additional activities in those different zones.
All I'm trying to say is that we go down this road, we as a council better take a long, hard look at this.
And I think that the public has helped us do that tonight. There's a, I appreciate what Beth said. She kind of took a whack at public safety and I co-chair public safety and I accept that whack. And the thought, if, there's a proverb that says that, something about you lean towards the last person that gave you an argument, or bleeds their case. And this has been a pretty tough night because we heard strong arguments from both sides kind of at the same time. And that's one thing we didn't have when we met at public safety, we heard from Dakota Kind and everything they said made sense. And that's why we did what we did. And then this excellent participation from the public tonight, everything y'all said made sense. It's about, there's eight of us stuck up here on the stage that have to take everything you've said and make a vote on it. And realizing that we are up here sitting as representatives of the community, making decisions, we took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, and the ordinances in the city of Hot Springs, and now we're trying to change the ordinance in the city of Hot Springs, so what we do. And that's going to be up to every one of us when Misty calls a roll. But I think this is probably the best public hearing I've ever sat through. I appreciate every member in the public that brought forth your well-thought-out opinions. I appreciate what Dakota Kind had to say. It's been very difficult, hopefully, for me, it's been very difficult, next few minutes will come.
I'd like to say something further, kind of an anecdote. I've never told too many people this story, but I want to make it public. My cousin Ben Nine Horse Campbell, if anybody's ever heard of him, Senator Ben Nine Horse Campbell. And I was talking to him a few years ago at the Crater Horse Mountain, and I asked him, how come there's never anything that's ever done to help the Native Americans and where you're at? And he said that because, and this is how I feel, because every time that they want to bring something up there, somebody else wants to slip something in on that just to go along with the program, and I'm not okay with this. And that's how I feel.
Anyone else, council?
Well, first and foremost, the state did vote on medicinal marijuana, and they voted it in. And as a nurse of forty years and critical care, and I've worked in all aspects of medicine, cancer, intensive care, chronic pain, addiction, I have seen the positive aspects of cannabis on those issues. So medicinally, marijuana does have a use and in this, everything that was brought forth earlier. So, but first and foremost, South Dakota did vote for medical marijuana, and it was mandated that we have a dispensary by the state, so that's where we stand. Now, we can assist this business in making it better and for our citizens, more specific to their needs and keeping them off the highways, going throughout the city. So those are my initial points to make out.
I want to know that I'm not against medical marijuana. I want that point known. What I'm hearing the general public say is you do not want manufacturing and cultivation in this town. Is that clear, what you're saying, not what they're not against?
We said earlier that they wanted it out of the country.
Okay, once again, I don't think we're hearing what they're not, they're wanting. They don't want manufacturing and cultivation in our small town. Am I correct, everybody? I've also had other individuals outside of this, constituents from my ward, come to me and tell me they're against this also. So I want that to be heard also.
Anyone else?
This is the first reading, we have a second reading.
Yes. On both ordinances. So I had three questions. Kim Allen, she's not with us this issue.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here? Okay. Kim, in the handout that you gave us, cannabis is still illegal, we understand that at the federal level. But do you acknowledge that in the state of South Dakota, municipalities don't have a choice when it comes to medical marijuana?
Yes, sir. I realize that it was voted on. It is, that was just a point, that it is still illegal federally. I do realize that medical marijuana has been approved in the state, as discussed, and that's a good point, because we are mandated to have a medical marijuana dispensary in the town. That's still going to be here. The patients are still going to be able to get what they're coming for. What we are speaking against is growhouses, and part of that argument of the federal pointing out that it's still illegal federally, is also pointing out some of the other issues that come with the growhouses and the manufacturing facilities, because it is not federally, it's not legal federally, therefore, they don't fall under any of the regulations when it comes to the federal mandates. Like, you can talk to a lot of your ranchers and farmers who have to have pesticide applications and licenses, and there's all sorts of federal regulations that pertain to other businesses that are federally legal that help with the regulation, the safety of the product, what's going on within the growhouses and the manufacturing facilities. And because marijuana is not, it is taken up on state-by-state level. So that was my point.
Thank you.
I wonder, no question?
No, it's just, when we, when council approved how many establishments we could have medical marijuana, you know, that was part of the discussion, is that, yes, it's still illegal at the federal level, that doesn't make any difference, we live in the state of South Dakota, we are mandated, you know, to provide medical marijuana. So I just wanted to have that conversation.
Yes, and I realize that y'all chose to go instead of limiting to a particular license number, like some other communities and counties where they limit, they're going to allow one license or such that's mandated. Y'all decided to vote to go by a population per fifteen hundred. I believe that a lot of that falls under, you know, what you do as well with your alcohol license, your airline or your hard alcohol license, I'm sure. I'm sure I wasn't already to that conversation when that was voted on and taking place. But yes, I do realize y'all were mandated to have a dispensary. And we have one. It's here.
Thank you.
And then my next two questions are for Dakota Kind. Jessica or Frank, whoever would like to respond to that. One of the speakers that are opposed to the cultivation and manufacturing had made the statement that you folks are delinquent in filing some of your paperwork and reports. What's your response to that?
I am, that's my fault. I paid most of the taxes today and the rest will be paid either tomorrow or Wednesday. But I did, they don't pay at my time.
And then the other one for you, Jessica, you had mentioned, and you've talked about this when you first approached public safety, that you feel you folks are at a disadvantage from who you buy it from. And it increases the cost that you would like to sell it at, my words, not yours. But you keep talking about being able to provide the product at a lower price. What's the assurance that everyone would have that you would continue to always have a lower price than where you where you have referenced where you're getting it from now? And two years down the road, you know, would the price be the same, would it be higher? That has been one of your main focuses, is that the price will always be lower. It will be a better price for your customers.
Right, in order to keep the price low, we would want to grow on our own. But we would stay competitive with the rest of the state. We'll try to keep it as low as possible because we do know our patients, we know our patients well. And we don't want to force them to grow without their medication. If if too many of our patients were saying that it's too expensive and they couldn't do it and we're able to lower our prices than we put. I don't know how we could guarantee that our prices would stay somewhere. I don't know if that's something.
I'm not necessarily, you know, asking would you guarantee that it would be at this price level or lower? But you've, you know, really emphasized that if you're allowed, if council allows you to have your own growing and manufacturing, your prices are always going to be lower. And the sense that I've gotten from how you've represented that, and maybe I've, you know, misunderstood, is that you're not going to be just, you know, a couple cents under whoever you're buying it from now. You're going to be significantly under where you're at, where you're having to purchase it from. Because that's, that keeps the folks in town and gives them a better deal. So, you know, is that always going to be the case? And what's the assurance of that? Or do you do you creep up where you're nickel under your competitor? But is that enough to keep people in town rather than going somewhere else? Am I confusing the issue or do you understand where I'm trying to go with this?
I'm just not sure exactly how to answer that because I don't know how I can guarantee that it is. We're not going to raise our prices. I can say that that's not my intention or Forrest's intention to raise prices. But the, it would depend on our costs to grow. And then we would be able to sell that to ourselves at a discount. So we're not paying for the transportation. We're not paying for the the other grow and their profit. We don't have to worry about that profit. We'll be providing that on our own.
Okay.
And we're also able to to make the different pictures and and everything that we need. Where we're not able to get that from from different grows. They might not have anything we run out of product because there's simply no one that has enough of what we need and what the patients of the town need. So if we're able to provide that, then we'll be able to provide it at a lower cost and it'll be available.
Okay, thank you.
Let me chime in on that. Our patients want different things that are that are not offered by other cultivators. Our whole, our main goal in this is cultivation. Manufacturing is going to be very, very small because of where we're. I don't even know if we can get the license. Yeah, cultivation is a big one.
Okay, thank you.
What about the annual report that seems to be delinquent?
That I will work on tonight. I'm sorry I didn't.
Is that the fee of fifty dollar a year? Is that what we're talking about for the all season?
That is what was passed around to you by Kim Allen. It is the annual licensing fee with the state of South Dakota. That is the viral thing. No, this is the annual licensing fee with the state. Not your registration certification, but your LLC's paperwork is what was passed. We showed them and she gave us her certificate. I'm new, I'm still learning. I don't know everything that I have to have done. And this is what my agenda was for, that I have to show them.
So annually, according to the license, I believe this is not your registration application. You're just, you're just yourself, you need to work by. How many do you do an annual report?
I got my accounting. No, I didn't. Well, they're my accountant. I've all talked to her about it.
One of the biggest problems in this industry is finding support, you know, from bookkeepers and the IRS. We fall under a completely different category called two eighty. And a lot of accounts are scared of that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So those are some of the challenges we face with to get them done.
I got a question for the two of you also. You're talking about specifically tailoring your marijuana to individuals, okay? That would be designing it to fit my needs, correct? Okay. You'd in essence, you'd be doing a designer drug, okay? You'd be fitting, you're doing something to fit my specific problem, right? You're saying that you do these for your individuals that you're you're doing this for, right? Is there any? Is there anything out there to say there is a certain standard that has to be done with this? I mean, in the media, in the, since all this has been going on, if people listen to what the media says, people have died from these designer drugs. That's something you need to think about.
Marijuana.
Yes, it has. There have been reports on TV where people have smoked stuff at different dispensaries and they died. So I'm wondering if, what guarantees do you have that that won't happen down here?
Okay, so as far as it being a designer drug, it's not a designer, we're not going in and changing the molecules with deciding which seeds to start with and how to treat the plant in order for it to grow the necessary terpenes. You take a tomato plant and you feed it different nutrients. It's going to provide either bigger, smaller, tastier, better, yeller tomato. You do the same thing with cannabis. If you wanted to have certain terpenes, you can take one seed. You can take an entire row of the exact same plant. You can clone a plant and treat it differently. You can hit it with hockey sticks, a lot of people will do. If you introduce that trauma to the plant, it is going to provide different terpenes. It's going to grow differently than if you grow without a win. Grow it with a certain amount of water, the plant is going to react differently. So it's still the natural plant, but you are treating it differently so it will grow the way you want it to grow. And on the dimension of people dying from overdosing on cannabis, that is, you can die from cannabis in certain ways. However, your entire body is covered in what's called CB one and CB two receptors. That's what takes in the cannabinoids. Your body requires these cannabinoids. We have an endocannabinoid system. We make those cannabinoids in our own body, but there can also be a disbalance. Every organ, your skin, everywhere in your body are these CB one and CB two receptors. The only place those receptors are not found is on your cerebellum, which is what causes death, both overdose of other drugs, methamphetamine and alcohol. Your organs will shut down, your, you can stop breathing. There are no CB one or CB two receptors on your cerebellum. So it will not stop your breathing no matter how much you smoke or how much you eat. You might get sick, you might get dizzy, you might vomit. You can choke on the vomit and and pass. But you will not ever be able to smoke or ingest enough cannabis, cannabis to shut down any of your vital organs, which is how you overdose on drugs. You cannot, it is not possible to overdose in that way on cannabis because we do not have those receptors in our cerebellum. Does that answer the question?
You have a question, ma'am? Can you come up?
So Misty JR left at eight thirty-six and returned at eight thirty-eight. And Carl, do you have an extension court?
Yes.
There's been a lot of discussion here concerning Dakota Kind and their grow facility, manufacturing facility. There's been some confusion out, or it hasn't been stated. It sounds like they're planning on doing this in the, in a location behind, I'm assuming, their current dispensary. My question is, how many plants? What size grow facility? How many plants would you plan to grow there? And how does this work with your other grow facility that you own or partners in, if you can?
I closed that and we're going to have more. I closed that facility and the answer is four hundred plants at the most. But it will take quite a while to get them.
And I think that, you know, where there's some confusion going on is in my mind, this ordinance is stating that for a cannabis establishment, it needs to be in a approved GC area. However, and I think the confusion is, even though we may approve or may not approve this, we're just approving the ordinance of general commercial for cannabis establishments. We're not saying that these people, those people, or anybody who may come in the door can have a grow facility, can have a manufacturing facility, can have a testing and packaging facility. That all has to still be approved by the state. Guidelines have to be still approved by the state. What the levels those are going to be, if they allow it to happen, if they say no, whatever. We're just showing that we have a current business that's a cannabis business and it is in a GC and others like it can be in a GC zone. Am I reading that wrong? Is anybody feeling anything here? Because I don't see any guidelines from the state of South Dakota yet that says, okay, Mr. Manufacturer, you have to do this and this and this and this. And to cultivate it, you have to do this and this and this. To package it, you have to do this and this. You have to test it. It has to meet this and this and this. That's not what this ordinance is saying.
No, I think you're right, JR, that the ordinance allows those types of facilities. And as as Larry brought up, what the members of the community told us tonight is, regardless, and I'm adding this, is regardless of what the state may or may not require in their licensing process for those cultivation and manufacturing types of facilities, these citizens that spoke tonight, for the most part, other than Jesse, Forrest and Kevin, do not want cultivation and manufacturing in Hot Springs. That's 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 the message that the nine out of twelve folks.
So to get it straight in my mind, ordinance twelve sixty-two, that's on this first page, we are just voting on having a cannabis dispensary in general commercial district.
No.
So we've changed dispensary because dispensary was singular. You could only have a dispensary.
Okay.
So changing it to establishment says you can have a dispensary. You can have cultivation and you can have manufacturing. And you can have it in GC and HS highway service.
Okay, so then explain to me what ordinance twelve sixty-three is requiring.
That makes the same changes to our licensing ordinance. So we have both the GOLE ordinance that establishes cannabis dispensaries currently. We have a request to extend that. And then we have our licensing ordinance. So the changes are essentially the same in both ordinance, the changes that we represent.
And the other discussion that we've had, as I understand it, is that if council changes the language in these two ordinances, then what we are saying is if any company that wants to have a manufacturing or a cultivation applies to the state and meets the state requirements, as a council, you need to approve that organization, that that business. If they've met all of the state requirements and the city's ordinance requirements and they apply, they get the license. It's not a matter of saying, oh, you've met all the requirements. It's just not warm and fuzzy for us so you don't get it.
How many signatures on your petition did you have?
It was right around two hundred. I don't remember. But it's a lot. We have six hundred, almost we're reaching a seven hundred.
We had almost two hundred signatures.
So Kim, I did have another question for you. You had talked about the smell from the the manufacturing and the cultivation. And my question is, do you know where the nearest grow facility is that would be similar to what these folks, you know, might open up?
All I have to go by is what they stated at the Buffalo Gap meeting last fall. Dr. Laya asked Forrest about his grow house because they have one in View County. I'm not familiar where all of the grow houses are. I do have a list of the cultivation facilities that have licenses in the state and the cities. I've got that here with me. I haven't read that all, but there's some in Rapid City, Bob Zellner, View County. There's seven in View County between Nual and Melfush and areas up in there. So I I have to look at the list and see. I don't have it off the top of my head.
If you could provide the list.
It's on the medical cannabis state of South Dakota website. Every license holder in every community and every type of license.
And what I'm curious about is a similar size. So that if council, you know, because the case has been made about how objectionable the smell from the processing is. That, you know, someone on council, you know, wanted to go smell one of them, that it would be, you know, a like size and decide for themselves whether that's something that's objectionable.
So three of the ones that I'm familiar with in View County have up to, can plant up to sixty thousand plants. Those are the ones over by Melfush. There's a small one, if y'all, I go buy it when I take my lambs to Nual. There's a small one, if y'all, I go by it when I take my lambs to Newell on the right-hand side of the road. I didn't bring a picture with me, but the light pollution that comes off of that can be seen for seven to eight miles. I can pull it up on my phone and show you what that looks like. You can smell that when you go by. And that is a, a greenhouse. That is, um, you know, I guess that's another point. We have people that are wanting to come in and, and build a facility and they just say, oh, well, it's gonna be enclosed. Oh, don't worry, uh, you won't smell anything. And yet there's never been any business plans or building models and code, you know, there's not a lot of code that we have here. And so those are the ones that I'm familiar with because I do business up there. I'm hauling lambs and stuff back and forth. It's right on the side of the road. It's not hard to miss. There's other ones around. So I, I, you know, I can get you the cities, the names. I would encourage you to go by and look at them. You know, look at the fencing, look at the security measures, uh, smell it. You know, I know people that live across the street and next door to them and they say they smell all the time. So it's, you know, people talk about, well, the sewer. Well, I mean, which, and that fits too. But I mean, you know, there's a lot of comments about that, but that doesn't mean you add to it. So, yeah, they stink. It smells like dead stuff.
Okay, so if, if you could give us like sizes.
Oh, well, I don't have like size. I mean, I've got the list, you know, I guess. Some of that, so some of this is not, some of this, well, I did, um, I, I have done a lot of the research on this. A lot of this information is not public knowledge, is not privy. Uh, like I can't, he, like, he, he ordered up that they did four hundred plants. They want to do four hundred plants. So you have to go and, and check it out and see. But you can't get that from the state. And most of these places are not gonna tell you how many plants were grown and that kind of stuff.
And, and that's at the heart of, of my question being fair to both sides. Uh, you know, what I've understood you to say is you were referencing a facility that grew sixty thousand, had sixty thousand plants. Well, I would expect that a facility that has sixty thousand would certainly smell different, I don't know how much, than a facility that has four hundred. So, so if council wanted to, they could do their own, you know, whatever, but I.
Yeah, that could be their own looking. And I, I understand what you're saying. It still smells. You're still gonna have to smell the four hundred or sixty thousand. A lot of the numbers that I've referred to, the larger ones, comes down to when they start talking about how much is available. So sixty thousand plants, and that's what I referenced in some of the, the literature. And like I said, you can start looking at the growth cycles, a minimum of a pound per plant. Look at how much they're gonna be producing. And, oh, now we're out of marijuana. Well, look at the list and stuff like that. So that's, that's a lot of the things that I do encourage the council to investigate on your own.
And, and that's why I'm asking for a list, you know, that they can look at and.
The site is medcannabis dot S D dot gov. All establishments that are certified in the state for all the different types of licensing are covered.
But you, you've, you're the one who's represented, they, they stink. So I'm asking you to provide the information rather than council go out and do the research. Tell them where they should be, where they should be going.
Go Newell, drive right up to Newell.
So, and, and I'm, I'm not asking for it tonight. And I realize I'm getting a little short here. I, I understand the importance of hearing from everybody, but we've been at this for a while and the information would help. For me, it would help if, if we had that. So I don't wanna prolong the conversation tonight. And I don't wanna give the appearance of cutting you short because it's not important. But I just, I'm asking you to provide the information and, and we can move on.
So I, I appreciate your questioning and I appreciate your wanting to look into that. I will absolutely see what I can find out. I will tell you that as a county, I mean, as a city council and elected official, you will have more opportunity because of your position and with this coming into your city to get information from the state than the general public, which is what I am.
They won't give a tuss either.
They won't give a tuss. Okay, so I mean, so we can go and I've gone and looked up addresses and stuff. You can find that through the Secretary of State's office. But a lot of the agents that are registered, that's not, they're just registered agents. That's not where the actual place is. So it takes some research. So if y'all want a list, I'm happy to provide that. And I would also say if I provide that list of where they are, that somebody goes and looks at them. I mean, that's the other thing. I've done a lot of the research and a lot of the homework and footwork with this stuff. And it oftentimes says, yep, okay. And nothing gets done from the, you know, from the elected officials. So, 'cause they, you know, so I put a lot of time in the interview as well to try to save y'all, that's some of what this is. But yeah, if you want a list, don't mind me.
Thank you.
Yep.
So. Could, could you just provide us a list? All right.
Well, I can give you a name, and he happens to also be a newly elected legislator, but Travis Isbey, he's also in our house in South Dakota. I don't, he's able to give any more information for you, but that would be a contact for you.
All right.
That should be easy to reference.
All right, so, thank you. Can you keep a brief, please?
I, I just wanna say, there isn't a facility in South Dakota that has sixty thousand plants. Nowhere near that. We gotta work with facts here, people, but the biggest facility in the state is Genesis Farms in Rapid City. And they are nowhere near sixty thousand plants. They don't even have ten thousand. We gotta look at facts. You can't just come up here and make stuff up. That's not right.
Thank you.
I would also like to offer that I know most of the grows in the state. If anyone would like to drive by, I would gladly take people and you can tell me which buildings we drive by have grows, because you can't smell them. I'd happily take anyone that would like to go drive by a couple of dispensaries. Most of them, you can't, can't tell any of them are grows from the outside. It's not something that they want advertised, but you can't smell them. I've been to almost all the grows. We have a good relationship with the grows in the state. You can't smell them from outside.
Okay, so.
I thought I'd just Google this. Some grower orders have been detected more than a mile from their source. This is from Ecos Sort by Industrial dot com. It's the first one that comes up. So absolutely, you can smell these and it's a mile from the source. Absolutely.
Okay, I got all my questions answered, council. Are there any other questions that came to you from the discussions we were just having? All right. Misty, would you call a roll, please?
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukenz?
No.
Travis Lorback?
Yes.
Gary Tocan?
No.
Linda Barbeau?
No.
Hal Glanville?
No.
JR Huddleston?
No.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Larry has two yeses and six no's.
The motion failed. Takes us to our next motion, our next ordinance, uh, ordinance B. Gonna get a motion on the first reading of ordinance twelve sixty-three.
Make a motion to approve the reading, the first reading of ordinance twelve sixty-three in ordinance revising title nine, Business Regulations, Chapter one one six Cannabis Establishments, one one six point oh four through one one six point oh eight and one one six point one four.
Second.
Discussion. Misty, would you call the roll?
Gary Tocan?
No.
Hal Glanville?
No.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukenz?
No.
Linda Barbeau?
No.
Travis Lorback?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
No.
JR Huddleston?
No.
Thank you.
Motion failed. Takes us to our resolutions. Gonna get a motion to approve, um, resolution eight, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one, the two thousand twenty-five salary wage resolution.
Make a motion to approve two thousand twenty-five dash one, uh, twenty twenty-five salary wage resolution.
Second. Mayor, before we vote, we identified one correction necessary on the first page. The water form of position is more sense off. So it's set at thirty sixty of the current hourly rate. It's thirty sixty four. We identified that today here in Lake O'Leary. So apologies for that error. If, um, JR, you would amend your approval of the resolution to include that correction and then Linda, you would second that.
So noted to amend the water form and hourly rate from thirty sixty to thirty sixty-four.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our next resolution, resolution B, um, two thousand twenty-five dash two, two thousand twenty-five part-time and seasonal hourly rates of pay.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash two, twenty twenty-five part-time and seasonal hourly rates of pay.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our final resolution, C, Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash three, designation of depositories and official newspaper.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash three, designation of depositories and official newspaper.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to new business. Gonna get a motion for new business, item A, set the election date as June third, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to set the election date as June third, two thousand twenty-five, combining with the Hot Springs School District twenty-three dash two and approve the combined election agreement.
Discussion? In the, uh, the agreement, Misty, under the purpose, June third, two thousand two T.
Yeah, that's not correct.
So if you just change it. Um, no, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item B, gonna get a motion to confirm the intent of the city council to cover the following police department reserve officer.
Make a motion to approve and confirm the intent of city council to cover the following police department reserve officer unpaid volunteer work for work comp purposes in two thousand twenty-five. Ryan Walls, Charlotte Shively, Sidney Bell, Daniel Smith, and Duane Stanley.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I get a motion for new business, item C, approve the two thousand twenty-five parades.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five parades, Chamber of Rural, Memorial Day Parade, Fourth of July Parade, Freedom Ride Parade, Hot Springs High School Homecoming Parade, December Parade of Lights and Hot Springs High School Graduation Parade.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. I get a motion on new business, item D, approve the existing contract, uh, two thousand twenty-four dash two between the city of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Humane Society.
I'll make a motion to approve extending contract twenty twenty-four dash two between the city of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Humane Society for animal boarding services in two thousand twenty-five, option year one.
Second. Discussion? I'd like to thank the folks from Battle Mountain Humane Society for staying with us. If there's anything you'd like to say to the council or if council has any questions for them, they've made themselves available. It's karaoke night for you.
Real quick, just the wording of the, um, animal boarding.
It's missing animal control and boarding.
Animal control period?
Yeah, well, the contract states animal control and boarding contract.
So I think, I make that amendment, that makes, that sounds.
Thank you.
Because it is on, on our paper here. For, uh, the contract is animal control and boarding contract. So I'll make that amendment.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can you give us any numbers? How many animals went through last year?
Four adopted now, we were at three.
Can you come down? Do you know if your name, rating, serial number?
People who watch it online wanna know who's saying what.
I really don't have numbers, but I do know that we have been sending in, uh, monthly reports from the city administrator. Until he left.
Do you still want them?
Yes. We also have a communication problem.
Same email. They just said the administrator.
Yes, I would like to still see those reports. I would like to see those reports.
So we adopted out three hundred and ninety-four animals in two thousand twenty-four. And we fixed, spayed and neutered two hundred and thirty-two cats. At about seventy thousand dollars.
Were a lot of those feral cats?
Uh, a lot, yes. It was more than, than domestic.
And then do you re-release those or what do you do with the ferals?
We do. We, we try to find ranches and farms that will take them. Otherwise, they're released back into the community where they were located. Anything else?
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Have a bedtime.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Gonna get a, a motion for new business, item E, approve extending contract two thousand twenty-four dash four between the city of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss.
I'll make a motion to approve extended con- contract twenty twenty-four dash four between the city of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss for police department and city hall cleaning services in two thousand twenty-five.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Uh, a motion for new business, item F, to approve the opening of a full-time administrative assistant position for city hall.
I'll make a motion to approve the opening of a full-time administrative assistant position for city hall effective immediately, um, with estimated added expense of fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars to be funded by future supplemental appropriation to the general fund finance department budget.
Second. Discussion? So council, I had reached out to each of you about refunding this position. We had it for a number of years, um, and tried a couple of different fits for it that, um, didn't meet what we had hoped that it would. that didn't meet what we had hoped that it would for a number of reasons. So we didn't put it into 2025 budget. But as we've hired a new city administrator and we have a new building inspector slash another title, another title, another title, we recognize that there's some significant administrative assistance that's going to be needed for those two positions. So what I had proposed to you was asking you to fund this of 2025. It'd be a position that would be primarily for the city administrator. A number of you had expressed your disappointment that city administrator hadn't been attending as many of your council or your committee meetings as you had wanted. And Jaclyn's been very good about meeting that expectation. But in doing that, there's a realization that each of your meetings may only take two hours of your time. But when you total up all the committee reports that you're going to see, it's a significant amount of time for the city administrator just to attend the meetings and be ready to follow up for all of what you expect her to be responsible for. To do that without some kind of administrative assistance, we're going to burn out another city administrator. So it's important, I think, to approve this position. Should that be in a position to also decide how much of that administrative assistant time would go towards the new building inspector. So it's been a position that we identified a number of years ago that was necessary. Just didn't figure out the good fit for it. And I think we probably found a good fit allowing the city administrator to throw a call that was going to be used. That's the reason it's back here in front of you for future supplemental appropriation. Jackie? Is there anything you'd like to add, Jackie?
No, I have nothing to add.
All right.
Let me ask you, if I may. Since you've been here and since you've been to all the committee meetings that we have, from public works to safety to all in between, how do you find going to those and coming back? Are you finding, once you get back to your office, the time for you to do any extra work or do any work from that particular meeting or others? Is it taking you quite a bit of time that maybe you have to take homework home?
I brought the administrative assistant document with me tonight because I was intending on working on it at home because I didn't have enough hours in the day. With all of the meetings that I've been trying to attend and the work that I try to get done in the office, I got in this morning and then at five o'clock I stayed. And then I just came straight here at seven and was intending on going home and working on that this evening. There's a lot to do with this position, I feel, if you're doing it the way it's meant to be done. So I do find myself struggling to keep up with work in between hours with all of the meetings that I am attending so that way I can keep up with all the information and the bulk work.
Jackie, do you feel like, I mean, you're just into the job new and I'm sure it's overwhelming. Seems like you're breaking out of the fire hose, right? But as time goes on, you think that's going to settle down a little bit? You'll be able to handle it all in your own or do you really feel like you need an assistant?
You're prepared?
So again, I would say that if you are doing this job the way that it's supposed to be done, I think that this position does need an assistant. And as the mayor stated, this position wouldn't be just for me. It would also be for our building inspector, code enforcement official, for him to use as needed to help fulfill his roles in some areas that we've identified need a lot of work. And to do that, as well as his primary, other primary jobs, I do think is essential. And to avoid the burnout that was noted earlier.
I think I recognize, I think I have seen that we don't follow up on things probably as well as we should follow up on things. Or are you seeing that this new end of the game or not?
I'd say there's a pretty fair follow-up. It wasn't like. What specifically?
Well, on code enforcement for one thing. Not going in any detail. That's my main concern. We talk about things and need to enforce this code. Of course, that code really won't have the staff to do it or hasn't been taken place practically if they come mistaken.
So as far as code enforcement goes, you know, we, our new code enforcement official just started today. So between him and I, I would like to see in the future, I would expect the follow-up that you were talking about. But while we are doing that, it would be helpful to have the assistant back at the office to maybe get things ready or prep things, prep reports, prep letters to go out, specifically when you're talking about code enforcement. When we are trying to enforce those things, you can have enough words of fifty to a hundred to, beyond that, individuals that need, property owners that need letters sent out to them. That's just one example of a way that an administrative assistant would be beneficial. It's a lot of work for us to go identify those problems and then also have to go and draft those letters and get those letters sent out and also do all the other things that come with our jobs.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
I'd like to add something here. I'm not even going to embarrass you, Jaclyn, but that's okay. I'm sure City Hall gets tired of seeing me come in almost every day. But there's times that I stop by and I talk to Jaclyn to see what's going on, what's happening. Is there anything you need to know? Or anything you need to do before the weekend starts? Or just any updates on anything? And the amount of work that she's doing, the time that she takes to stop to answer my questions, I agree with the mayor. I think she could need an assistant to help her. She's constantly, you were very unorganized today. Just kidding. Yeah, I think she needs this.
You're right, Gary, that, you know, there hadn't been the kind of follow-up that we had hoped for previously. Jaclyn's interesting and frustrating sometimes in that when you've, when she's asked to take something on, she wants that task completed yesterday rather than putting it off till next week. So her ability to do that could be severely hampered in all the days that, we've got ten committees that she attends. And the first Thursday of every month, she's got two committees that she needs to attend on that day. So when she comes back from airport having administrative assistance, she can hand off some of those things to the assistant and get her work and get the individual working on those right away rather than coming back at the end of the day and having two committees that she's trying to follow up on. So I think that administrative assistance could really help in some of that follow-up and more tightly. And what do we want our city administrator doing? Do we want administrating or do we want them doing administrative work? And I see that in this particular case, putting the resources towards those three new individuals, I think we're going to see some significant changes.
I'm satisfied with your response.
Thanks, Harry.
Sometimes at the end of a situation where we just hire assistants, we just have assistants. See, that happen not necessarily here with other organizations. So I want to be careful that we reserve someone that's going to be compliant with function.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business, Item G, approve and accept the sole bid from Mainline Contracting, Inc.?
I make a motion to approve and accept the sole bid from Mainline Contracting, Inc. for 2025 River Culvert Boring and Restoration Project, Schedule A, for the three culverts under the South Sixth Street Dip Bridge in the amount of seventy-three thousand three hundred.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question about forty-six forty substation. There was a petition two years ago when we did the Fourth of July, that all those closed. Is the bridge going to be closed too? Something like that or not?
I don't have that answer for you right now, Wally.
Right. Before you want to do anything about it, sign the contract, maybe you're going to look back when John Shelton want to do the same thing. Wants to cut, make it like, not around by square one or whatever. How did the pole engineering from Oman and Russia, they explained when you do that?
So to do something with the bridge versus the culverts?
Yeah, there's a, the culverts, we can do anything with it. Make them bigger or something like that.
We're just going to bore them out because they're plugged. So he'll be working from the river, not really necessarily on the road.
Well, I don't know what they, they say that just boring. They're going to stop working on it and they might destroy the bridge.
Yeah. What they've, yeah. What they've explained to us, Wally, is that they'll actually build a cutter that will be the appropriate size to actually bore through the culverts and loosen the calcium, the sediment that's built up in there. It's something that the state has done to their culverts yearly throughout the state. You know, not yearly to every bridge, but they're doing this kind of boring every year somewhere on a state highway to clean out the culverts. So it's not, it's common that they do this kind of thing. And it's never been, the concern's never been expressed to us that they would actually damage the bridge. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I understand. I remember that you were, you know, with the constructionmen, is concerned about that particular bridge being closed and, you know.
Yeah, those nights when we started, we were tourism. Week before, shut down the business. My main interest in my business. And took, took, took the work on it.
Yes. They have said that they plan on doing the work in August. So we'll raise the question.
He also mentioned it would only be about a week's worth of work, if I recall correctly. It wouldn't last more than a week or so.
There's no doubt, it would not be dry. No, I mean, it would be a great for us.
If I may, I noticed that the motion doesn't include the information regarding the difference between what total budgeted in 2025 for the work, which is fifty thousand. So there's an additional twenty-three thousand three hundred dollars. So in the first meeting in January, we're collecting supplemental appropriations of seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars, but already a cash applied of seven hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So I just want to bring that to your attention. I know this needs done, but I don't see in the motion anything about addressing where the whole bridge is going to be paid from. And it will require an additional supplemental appropriation to cover additional twenty-three thousand three hundred, somewhat with budgeted to what's being accepted tonight.
Bill, Al, do you have anything that you wanted to add from the public works meeting?
This is, of all the options, what's on here is Schedule A. The other schedules included putting sleeves in this after the boring, which we decided not to do because an unlined culvert has lasted us seventy years. So we decided that boring this out, we'd probably get another seventy years. And we also opted not to do the Joplin Street Bridge because the buildup is not nearly as significant. And plus, this came in significantly higher than our estimate of fifty thousand dollars. So this is all we're willing to ask council to include.
And I believe Tracy said that, you know, if it gets any more occluded, that it would be an underwater crossing on a regular basis. So it is something that's getting more necessary and dire with time.
You brought that by me again, Misty, dollar amounts.
Between the new business, Item F, that was just approved, and this new business, Item G, you're additionally appropriating seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars to the 2025 budget in the first meeting in 2025, where the total cash applied for 2025 budget was seven hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that's savings to balance our budget in 2025, right, an additional seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars to that original amount in the first meeting of 2025. I'm not mentioning it because I don't think either one of those are good choices. I just want to ensure that you are aware of these changes to the budget that has already had a significant amount of cash applied to it.
And this is how much over the original?
Fifty thousand is what you budgeted in 2025 for this project, and that was just a projection. So this particular item you're voting on is twenty-three thousand three hundred dollars over what's budgeted. And it just didn't mention in the action where that additional amount would be paid for. So I wanted to make sure you're aware that it required an additional appropriation, like one of them.
I think the original fifty thousand was out of the 212 fund.
Correct.
So this will be a supplemental appropriation out of the 212.
That was my next question, you know. Yeah, take it out of there. So do we need to make an amendment to this or?
No, not necessarily. Vote to approve it, I'll make sure it gets added to our supplemental budget this year.
We just want to make sure it's, you know, do we need to come back and have another appropriation?
Yeah, you'll be voting on it in June and like, so I'm sure it's asked to additionally incorporate to us.
And when we forget where we wanted to come from, Misty will remind us.
Two, one, two.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We removed new business, Item H. So can I get a motion to approve new business, Item I? Possible motion discussion to approve 2025 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Assignment of Lease.
Make a motion to approve the 2025 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Assignment of Lease site for billboard location, south of Minnacaw Junction on US Highway 18 with Anthony and Kelly Road.
Second.
I would just note that you approved this lease assignment at the last meeting in December for Scott Phillips, who owned the lair that sold it to the Road.
It's a transfer, yeah?
They are extending the same terms and conditions that he has, but they're the owners now. Oh.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business, Item J, an automatic budget supplement of one thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-one cents to additional sales tax fund?
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of one thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-one cents to additional sales tax fund. Services and fees, 212-21200-42200, and fifty thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents to the airport improvement, 212-212- to the airport improvement, two-one-two dash two-one-two zero-zero dash four-five, four-two-zero for construction administration and construction costs of the ten unit hangar taxi lane and site development project. Reimbursement revenue received from the AIP grant funding number three dash four-six dash zero-zero-two-zero dash fifteen dash twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Good job, Deb.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Uh, and our last new business item K, can I get a motion for an automatic budget supplement of thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents to the additional sales tax fund?
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents to the additional sales tax fund. Services and fees, two-one-two dash two-one-two zero-zero dash four-two-two zero-zero for construction administration of the hangar taxi lane and approach designed in construction observation and administration. Reimbursement revenue received from AIP grant funding number three dash four-six dash zero-zero-two-zero dash eighteen dash two-zero-two-four.
Al? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Misty, did you note that Linda left around nine sixteen-ish and returned at nine eighteen?
I did.
Thank you.
Yeah, Misty? Yeah.
Um, we're at nine-thirty, council. Uh, do you want to go through the committee reports? Do you want to defer them to the next meeting? What's your appetite?
Executive special.
No. No. Unless you want one.
I just saw, I didn't have a number behind it, so.
Doesn't have a number behind it. Um, so JR's asking of the ten committee reports, how many people would be giving one tonight if we devote the time to it? So we got two, three, four, and Public Works is equivalent to probably three.
I think we can do it. We're tough.
All right.
I still do it quick. We're a sophisticated person.
So the agreement is we do abbreviated, uh, committee reports, so the first one would be Admin Finance.
Admin Finance meets on January thirteenth, one PM, here in the Mueller Civic Center.
Excellent report. The督, Airport Advisory, Gary?
The Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, January second, two thousand and twenty-five, eight-thirty AM at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport.
So already longer than Administry and Finance.
Members present are Shane Miller, Mike Wobner, uh, airport employee, Airport Manager Ivan Benner, Sunny Mendez, Jacklin Kelsey, Public Works Engineer Tracy Backton, KLB Airport Executive Director Major, elected officials, with all of them Gary Hillcap, Mike Telwood, all of them Phil Lucas, Airport Tennis, none. Members of the public, Asat Wobner, agenda was out, adopted, had published, no communication to the public. Flight outs, fuel sales report, sold eight-hundred-and-seven gallons of fuel in December, estimated fifty flight out operations, one thousand gallons of usable fuel tanks there. Next fuel purchase will be about February. Blue ops, four takeoffs, no landings. Contractors done grinding, have done, done grinding on aprons, addressed any issues. All aprons meet FAA specifications. Status AWAS three, the FAFB review is in process. It'll be done early January, plan for by April second complete. The team meeting will be scheduled with the FAA, the last half of January, looking for early March bid, hoping, hoping for contact in place this summer. Discuss possibility that FAA reduce from seven-hundred-foot moon approaching the airport, consulting at most two-hundred feet. Airport manager has coordinated with Southwood DOT, area director to work with FAA assess the possible reduction. Airport observations, opportunities for improvement, non-new business, supplement on the aviation activities in support for 2025. Blue stuff, identified schedule, committee leader to sign this meeting, Thursday, November sixth, eight-thirty AM, next meeting during nine-thirty.
Any questions for Gary?
Uh, did, did you send those minutes just, uh, load to the website?
I did.
Well.
I did. Sent them very well. Saturday, May eighth, or seventh, you know.
Thank you, Gary. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board will next meet this Thursday, January ninth, at seven o'clock, here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Uh, Historic Preserve, Preservation met January second here. Um, present were Carl Hall, Kara Hagan, Mike Summer, myself, and Jacqueline Kelsey. Under Old Business, a Garrison flag is in pro, I thought the museum is in process. Um, signs on sidewalks and pedestrian bridges, the long banners, that's all been discussed at previous ones. Um, the open for burgers flags at restaurants will have to be taken down as per ordinance now that the construction season is finished. Um, and wondering about possibly sending letters to people that, um, have them up. Um, Evans Apartment Window Project, uh, Joe was not in attendance, so we had no update. The River Channel retaining barrier, another bidder is being sought, um, under the deterioration by neglect updates. Under, we have two that are specifically under, um, legal process right now, and then we have a third, one-one-fourty-three Chicago penny building, um, is also of great concern and discussion was had on sending a letter to that owner. And, uh, email vote will take place since there was no forum to move forward with sending that letter in a letter to the council, asking to do so. Um, legislative, number six, legislative options for funding covered in new business a bit, and other options were tabled. The Hot Springs website, um, there was, uh, the link to the historic preservation was not working, so, um, that needs to be fixed and is in process. And nothing new with Saber Sandstone update. Sorry. And, uh, a dedication for the January Deadwood Historic Preservation Meeting. Uh, date of the upcoming meetings was January set, twenty-second and February twelfth. Um, discussion was had on having three to four people from Hot Springs. HPC to attend, a letter was drafted but should be sent first as well as requesting to be added to their agenda for the meeting, so we're holding off until both can be accomplished as agreed upon. Discussion items, the board was told that final drafts for the replacements of the staircases is in process. Snow removal options were discussed, and as mentioned, the HPC link at the Soakin website is broken, and Jacqueline has, has visited Imperial.
We don't say things that Soakin, but. I, I got listening, I spoke about it, I sent it to you.
And, um, there are these, um, new cards with a really pretty picture of Hot Springs, um, down at City Hall. Um, realtors are going to be getting them. They're here at, uh, the, um, Chamber of Commerce, and on the backside is a QR code that you can get, takes you to the Soakin Hot Springs, and all the links under the HPC site so that anyone who buys these sandstones or is interested in any historic preservation, all the guidelines and and applications are on that website, so hopefully those will be getting handed out right now. Um, meeting adjourned at six oh five, and we'll be meeting again February fifth, five PM here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Hi. Go ahead. I did have one comment to make about the business signs. Um, a public notice was sent out, um, via the website and Facebook, just to business owners in general before we start individually reaching out.
Excellent, thanks.
I was, I was going to recommend, why not just stop it? Just write, send a letter, just say, and it's not just our ordinance, it's, um, our, we are required by DOT to enforce their right of way, protect their right of way, so both city ordinance and our assurances and agreements that we make to DOT every day. Now that our code enforcement official has started, I briefed him on that discussion today, so we'll follow it.
We just kind of let it slide because of the road construction, and there was just so much busyness that people didn't know if the businesses were open or closed, so, um, that is not needed anymore.
Thank you, Deborah. Evans Pudge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Pudge Advisory Committee will meet Thursday on the ninth at noon at the Evans Pudge Mineral Springs.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry, Linda?
The next meeting will be this Wednesday, Wednesday, eighth, at two PM here at the Mueller Center, everybody is invited to it.
Thank you. Lani and Sony, Deborah?
Uh, we will be meeting on February the fifteenth, six PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety met on Thursday, January second, one PM here at the Mueller Center. Present were myself, JR, Mayor Nelson, Chief Milton, uh, Jacqueline, Lori Sherard, Emergency Management, Gary Baker, from the hospital, was Renee Staley and, uh, Reed Haskovitz. One member of the public, Frank Burkowitz, uh, Burko, sorry, just present. Um, under Communications from the public, a member of the public brought offers of assistance regarding turkey, trapping, and deer harvest areas. Uh, there were items communicated to myself at the November coffee with the cop, those were passed off by Chief Norton after the meeting, as they weren't appropriate for an open meeting chair. Also, a member of the public communicated some concerns of parking violations in designated no parking areas on North River Street. Such concerns should be communicated to dispatch when they are noted so that they can be addressed at the time by the PD. Uh, updates, uh, from the Police Department, the chief informed the committee about the proposed contract that we're beginning to discuss tonight. It will be on the next agenda, likely. Chief also updated the committee on recent efforts to combat a series of burglaries. Under Old Business, the ICS 402 training for elected officials. That link for the online training and the link for the virtual training has been provided to the council members and appropriate employees, therefore this item will be dropped from Old Business. Essentially, it's up to you all to take the training either online or the virtual training. Uh, under family daycare compliance, the city administrator and myself provided an update regarding potential plans that developers committed to compliance. Regarding the speed limit consistency issues on Highway eighteen, uh, essentially the DOT agrees with that, and they now have to run that through their administrative processes, so that is coming off the list. And the relocation of the stop sign on North River Street at Jennings Avenue by Kitchen, Inc., uh, that is the responsibility of the state, and so they'll be, uh, moving that sign closer to the new crosswalk, so that's coming off the list. Under New Business, the addition of a yield sign on South Sixth Street near the Jensen Highway was discussed. I agree that it would be helpful for that intersection, as there have been several observed near Missus. Uh, the city administrator took an action to have a sign installed on the sixty pole. Uh, we adjourned at two oh six PM, and the next meeting will be Thursday, February sixth, one PM at the Mueller Center.
JR, anything you want to add?
Nothing.
Any questions?
I'd just, uh, like to thank Jacqueline, I understand that you are a lot to do with seeing that that sign was relocated, the hospital sign that was blocking the, uh, stop sign, I got a couple several times through the intersection from our wife, so glad to take care, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Bill, Al?
Public Works met on December thirty-first at one PM here at the Mueller Center. Members present were Phil Lucas, myself, Deborah Johnson, Mayor Bob Nelson, Chief Administrator, Jacqueline Kelsey, Public Works Engineer Tracy Backton, Grace Foreman, Jason Correll, Megan Spelman, Kurt Stechris, members of the public, President Craig Romi, Chad Olson. Communications from the public, the baseball association is working on an area for pitching machines in Butler Park. Chad Olson requested about a hundred and fifty tons of millions for the project. The value of millions based on price pages saves approximately six hundred dollars. There would be an additional cost to the city to transport the millions from the city shop to Butler Park. The baseball association should provide all the labor, as this would advise of Butler Park asset, asset. The committee's support provides the question building in support of the pitching machine project. And request a council action to put this to place on the January twenty-first council agenda. Concern was expressed regarding city employees cleaning Uvicar Dog Park. Since the original agreement was the city employees would not maintain the dog park. The city administrator informed a member of the public that the city will maintain the area around the park, but not inside the park, and has informed the dog park organization that is their responsibility. The member of the public restated concern over vehicles parked in boulevards. The city administrator stated a once-in-year code enforcement officer is in place. Plan to address this issue will be implemented. On the Old Business, the final review of the weight bearing, weight lighting side was, there was no updated available. We discussed the cause estimates on the stairway have been received, but the engineering anxiety for the grant application have not been received. Looking at a March timeframe for grant application. We discussed the value drainage next step, the city will pursue, pursue a meeting with value property owners regarding assessment district. Public Works Engineer assessment of dip bridge boring bid, the bid met all requirements for the bid package. The committee recommended award a contract to Mainline Contract. New business items, three oh one Marlock Drive on the driveway damage was reviewed and discussed. Area concern for the property owner, or the portions of the driveway that were removed from damage in the process of accessing or repairing the city water line, and not a result of leaking water. Also, a damaged portion lies within the city right wing. As in normal, when a leak occurs, the city replaces the portions of the street or sidewalk that have been moved in order to repair the leak. As such, a wiring part will be instructed to cause repair when the weather permits. Tree trimming was also discussed in the public notification and compliance process regarding trimming of trees or shrubs within or overhang of public right of way, Title IX, Chapter ninety-four dash one-two. The city minister will continue to work that process. Departmental summaries, streets have maintenance that were done, water department done, wastewater discussed the need for redundant sledge bump, and discussed trying to find a contractor to do fixture testing of piping to the boiler room. Public engineering code enforcement that was done. Active, interactive project information has been updated and can be found in current Public Works report on the city website. Our next, the meeting adjourned at three twenty-two PM, next meeting will be Tuesday, January the twenty-eighth, at one PM. Everyone is invited.
Anything you want to add, Bill?
No.
Any questions for Bill or Al?
I just don't see some public works agendas for that thing you're saying for twenty. I just don't see the Public Works addenda for that thing you're saying for 2025 on the website yet. The minutes with the report, the agenda minutes or reports, were those done?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, Sarah, I got an email from Sarah that said she had motion.
Oh, I'm looking right now. And I didn't have that structure relation on me there.
I just put them into there. So just come today.
Thank you, gentlemen. Course is closed, so there's no call course advisory committee report. City administrator report, Jacqueline, anything you'd care to share?
I don't have anything to report, but I did just want to say thank you to everyone so far who has been forgiving with the amount of time that I've needed to get a lot of things, a lot of pieces put together. So thank you for everyone's help and patience. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Misty?
I wrote up my report, so for the sake of time, I'm gonna let y'all read it and ask you the questions. These are not final, plenty of more numbers. If you know that, first, there, I've explained why it's not. I'm always open to any questions. I think our finances are very, very important. So if you have questions, please bring them. And I would also like to thank you, Jacqueline. I don't know that we've had anybody hit the starting gate so hard, and I, I don't think you need forgiveness for the amount of time that it's taken you to do everything, and I just appreciate the way that you've done it. Pleasure to work with.
I'm not going to prolong your evening, any significant amount of time here. I would add from what Misty had said, with our three new positions, I think we're going to be starting to work the year off well, especially with Jacqueline overseeing the new administrative assistance that you approved and the new building inspector, and approving the ten days in January for Scott to work with Wesley. I think we're off to a good start. So Council, I appreciate everything you've done to put us in a good position for 2025. Thank you very much. So Deborah, sorry, there's no executive session. So with that, I can give a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.